I will call the July 8 Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and Commissioner Elmore lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Staff roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Klostermeyer, who is excused.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will do item number one, which is the election of officers. This is the time for our election of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Nominations do not require a second, and a majority vote is required to elect. We will now elect the Planning Commission Chair, and the nominations are open. And I would like to start off by making a motion to nominate Vice Chair Lowry for that position.
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, we're going to do a hand vote. Does that work for staff?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Okay, all right. Congratulations, Chair. Here's your gavel and your cheat sheet.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Well, Eric, I appreciate it. I know it's been a, you've had a big year last year in keeping everything together on commission and getting us led, so I want to appreciate all your time and just in some of the conversations I've had. I know it's extra time that you have to spend as Chair, and I know I want to thank you for all the time that you spent, not only as Planning Commissioner, but as Chair. I know it's a lot of extra time and effort and a lot of decisions you have to make on the fly, and really appreciate all your time and efforts for last year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Laura Kleiman, our Secretary Laura Kleiman, to Vice Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Vice Chair Kleiman.
Peter?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion for Secretary to be my chairmate here, let him take over the duty of signing all the documents here for the rest of the time. Curtis is my nominee for Secretary.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hello?
Aye.
All right. All right, congratulations all, and Curtis, look forward to everyone contacting you when they see your name all around town for all the, all of the different notifications.
And lawsuits.
And lawsuits, yeah. I, just one order, one housekeeping order, I was just, Eric had spoken to me right before the meeting that in terms of seat order, you know, we could rearrange seating and have the Chair and the officers in the middle, or keep as-is, and I guess it's the prerogative of the Chair, but I would look at it as more as what we think as a group. For me, I'm kind of happy where we're at, if no one wants to change it up, but if someone has a different idea, I'm open to it.
All fine.
Let's put some music on and see what happens.
Yeah, I know. There we go. But it looks like there's no, nothing, okay. We'll just keep it as-is. I think we got, I got used to this Chair and this view, so we'll keep it, we'll keep it this way for now, so. All right, let's move on then to our public comments, and public comments are invited on only non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of planning commissions. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record and print your name on the blue forms that are provided at the, provided at the desk here. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Looks like there's none, so we'll go ahead and move on to number six, requests for continuances.
Chair Lowry, there's no requests for continuances.
Okay. We'll move on to number seven, which is consent items, and just our item number two, which is minutes of June 3, 2021. If everyone would like to review and approve.
I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
All right.
Oh, yeah, we are. We got, we're, we're live.
All right.
The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Elmore and Vice, excuse me, and Chair Lowry abstaining.
All right. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, public hearing items. Today, we have item number three, which is the appeal, appeal of the interpretation allowing accessory residential within resort hotels, PA 2021-96. And staff, if you'd like to lead us off.
Thank you, Chair Lowry. And Commissioners, congratulations to all the new officers. I am Simone Jurges, I'm the Community Development Director, and with me I have Deputy Director Jim Campbell and Principal Planner Hami Murillo, along with Traffic Engineer Tony Bryan and Assistant City Attorney Yolanda Summerhill. So, this item this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and make that presentation, it's a very brief presentation, and I talked about it maybe about a month ago, and this is regarding a determination that I've made to interpret that residential uses can be an accessory to a hotel. And this item has been appealed by the folks at SPA, and I'm just going to go ahead and just, again, it's given me about 10 slides, and then afterwards, happy to answer any of the questions from the Commissioners. So, I want to go back a little bit, that the City Council adopted a new policy, Council Policy K4. And for those of you at home, the state mandates in a lot of housing units for all cities in California, and we do this every eight years. And right now, we're going through this cycle of to adopt a new housing element. And what's different in this cycle is that we have an extraordinary amount of housing units that we have to plan for. It's approaching 5,000 units that the state has mandated that we have to plan. And these housing units are, cover a wide spectrum of income levels, from very low to low, moderate, and above moderate. And so, the Council adopted a policy that's really looking at reducing those barriers to encourage the creation of housing. And so, there's three key points in their policy. One is looking, is directing staff to look at ADUs and allowing ADUs to be more permissive in the city. And in the past, you've heard ADUs as granny flats, and we really didn't allow those units to be built in Newport Beach. It was just, it was not in our ordinance. And so, right now, staff is working hard to change our code, to make it more permissive, to allow individuals to build ADUs, and this is by the direction of City Council. In addition, the policy also directed staff to review all our mixed-use zoning and look at ways of how we can encourage housing in our mixed-use zones. And so, we're working on that, and we're going to come back to the Planning Commission with recommendations. And in addition to that, a third bullet point there is looking at our mixed-use, looking at our hotel resorts, and is there any mixed-use opportunity there to allow residential uses? So, the issue today is that third bullet point, looking at those hotels and allowing for the residential component. So, with our hotel industry, and it's really important to understand what's happening. So, I've talked about the housing units. We have to plan for an enormous amount of housing units, and this is state mandated and Council directed staff to comply with state law. In addition to that, we all have experienced COVID, and different industries felt the effects differently. The hotel industry is suffering from COVID, and it's not just with our local stay and tourism, but our hotel industry is, takes in a lot of international travel, local travel, business travel, group travel, and each of those, those areas of travel are going to recover differently. We don't know what business travel and group travel is going to look like going forward. That recovery time could be very long. Now, we're all on Zoom, we're all on Teams, there's a virtual, there's a virtual way to hold meetings. You don't have to do it in person anymore. From our, from a city standpoint, for city staff, half our meetings now are virtual. So, the hotel industry needs a lot of support. So, we went forward and looked at how we can support that hotel industry. So, one thing to keep in mind is that the city's code, municipal code, gives the Community Development Director, myself, the latitude and the authority to make interpretations of the code and to determine if any unlisted land uses are allowed. Now, if I didn't have this authority in the code, that means every decision, any ambiguity would have to come to the Planning Commission or to the City Council, and there's a lot that we do every single day. The code isn't perfect, we have to make interpretations of the code. There's land use issues that come up all the time, we have to make interpretations of the code. So, wanted to make sure that both the zoning code, which is Section 20, Title 20 there, and in our local coastal implementation plan, Title 21, gives me that authority to make those interpretations. So, consistent with what the code allows me to do, consistent with City Council Policy K4, I went ahead and made an interpretation that residential uses can be looked at as an accessory use to the hotel, and I've explained why, because we're trying to support the hotel industry. And at the same time, we, there's a huge need to plan for housing. And so, it's, and it's not a blanket interpretation, there are conditions, there are caveats to this, and I'm going to go through some of those. So, your, the determination looks at the conversion of taking one unit offline and converting it into a residential use. And so, that, under this determination, allows for that. But there's a limit, you can't do it 100% of the hotel, we lose all our hotel units. There has to be a specific type of hotel, hotels that have amenities, that are considered resort style, that have restaurant uses, that have meeting room spaces. Those are what we call traditional accessory use. Where I'm looking at those residential units that are going to be able to be part of that accessory use definition. Now, again, we're not going to, I'm not allowing all 100% of the hotel to be converted to residential, a maximum of 30%, because we want that primary use to continue to be a hotel. We need to ensure that we preserve our TOT that comes forward. And again, this is, applies to specific types of resorts, not every single hotel is going to be allowed to do that. Each of the hotels, as part of the determination, will require a conditional use permit, a CUP. The Planning Commission here is CUPs, so every, any hotel that wants to take advantage of the Director's determination will have to come in front of the Planning Commission. Hotels, and in this determination, only one hotel is in the coastal zone, and if that hotel chooses to go forward with a project, they'll need a coastal development permit. We'll combine that with a use permit, and that will be presented to this Planning Commission. Any hotel that wants to take advantages of this determination, we need to ensure that the parking is neutral, that there's adequate parking on-site, and that will be reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission. And it finally, with any type of hotel that wants to take advantage of this determination, will require a development agreement, because we want to first, one, ensure public access if it's in the coastal zone. We do need affordable housing units, so we need to negotiate, either we're going to have affordable housing planned, or is there going to be in lieu fee paid? And we have to analyze that there is, is there going to be a loss of TOT, or is there going to be an offset to that revenue? And so, all that gets negotiated through a development agreement. The only, the only authority that can approve development agreements is the City Council. The Planning Commission does not approve development agreements, though they have an opportunity to review it. So, this is the Director's determination that I have issued. Now, SPA, the Stop polluting our Newport, has appealed that, and they've stated that the determination improperly conversed the general plan approved hotel allocations into general plan approved dwelling units without a green light tracking or Charter Section 423. So, I'm going to, I'm going to focus, I'm really going to focus on that part, and they can go ahead and make their arguments when it's, when it's their turn. So, let's look at Charter Section 423, and just looking at the words of our Charter section. So, this is a voter-approved Charter section, and just underlying that first line there says voter approval is required for any major amendment to the Newport Beach general plan. And I've stated this before, my determination is not a general plan amendment. It just recognizes that you can convert a hotel unit to a residential unit. It's just an interpretation of the code, this is not a general plan amendment. So, this section does not apply. Now, let's continue with that thought. Assuming that this section did apply, let's look at what is defined as a major amendment. So, that first red line there, it says major amendment is one that significantly increases the amount of traffic. Well, our Traffic Editor is present, we've looked at the trips from converting a hotel unit to residential unit, and it's a wash. It doesn't go up, it's a wash. And that second line there, let's look at what that says, it says, allowed uses could generate or significantly increase allowed density or intensity. So, this determination is specific to the conversion of hotel units. You take one hotel unit offline, you add a, you convert it into a residential unit. We're not increasing density, we're not increasing intensity at all. So, it doesn't even meet these thresholds that are in our Charter Section 423. There's no general plan amendment, we've looked at the trip rates for dwelling units, and they're similar to a hotel or less, and the conversion is really based on a one-for-one basis, it's a conversion. There's no language in this Charter section that talks about conversions. Now, the city has done conversions before, we've, and then we have two there as kind of case studies or examples. So, the City Council has approved, and the Planning Commission has approved, the conversion of tennis courts into hotel rooms, and that was done in 2011 and 2012. This is for that, the tennis courts adjacent to the Newport Beach Country Club. And then the second case there, that the City Council did approve, the transfer and conversion of hotel units, somebody on hotel units to residential units, and those are for the Villas of Fashion Island. So, we have two conditions there, where both the Planning Commission and the City Council supported the conversion of, supported conversion, and one of those is two residential units. Now, I've made a prior determination in the past, and this is relevant to the discussion tonight, so I did make a determination, this is back in 2017, for our new fire station number two site on Newport Boulevard. And that was a old abandoned McDonald's that got sold off, and the developer is looking to convert it to kind of a small retail strip center. It was in the CV zone, which is commercial serving visitors. It is in the coastal zone, and the fire station is not listed as an allowed use. I made the determination that we're going to recognize that the fire station can be an allowed use in the CV zone. That was published, the City Council accepted it, and we're under construction right now for a fire station on that property in the CV zone. And that's the short gist of my presentation to you. I know you may have some questions, we just want to recommend that to go ahead and hold a public hearing and open it to the public. Thank you, Chair Lowry.
All right. Thank you, Director. Is there questions for staff? Commissioner Ketti?
Yes. Question, a couple little ones, let me find out. It states in here, property owner that desires to have accessory residential units at their hotel shall process a CUP. That's on page four, the staff report. Would that be the owner of the hotel, property owner of the hotel, or each individual that owns 30, each unit?
No, it'd be the owner of the hotel.
So, that would be prior to them, and these would be, units would be sold to?
Well, they're residential units, and we're not defining whether they're for sale or for rent.
All right. That explained that. And on a one-for-one, are you referring to one hotel room would go out and that would become a residential unit?
That's correct.
And would that residential unit be, have a kitchen in it, have amenities in it?
That's true, for a residential unit to qualify as residential, we will have to have cooking appliances, sleeping accommodations.
And could they be more than one bedroom?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I picked up two of the three, but say this was approved or went through the process, what were the items that would trigger us or the Council saying it? You said there was a DA, and you said a parking study. What were the other items that you had said that would trigger it coming to us once a project over time would come?
Certainly. So, there's no entitlements here, this is just the recognizing that you can convert a hotel room to a residential unit. So, any applicant that wants to take advantage of this determination will have to process an application through the city, and city staff will have to review it. The determination says you must have a use permit. If you're in the coastal zone, you're going to need a coastal development permit, and at the same time, we're going to require a development agreement, because we're going to lose, if we're going to lose TOT, we have to analyze that. There's still environmental concerns, the SEQA is not waived, so all those items are the entitlement process, and that still needs to go through the traditional review process through the city, and will be brought forward to the Planning Commission. Anybody who's going to take advantage of this is going to have to have a development agreement, and that project, whatever site it is, is going to have to eventually go to the City Council, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rosin?
I'm going to try to form a question here. So, this doesn't actually transfer units at this point, and not until a project is created, does something transfer. And only until a project actually transfers, or, excuse me, only when a project would maybe be approved, would there be an amendment to the statistical table on this, and that would be when the transfer took place? When does the transfer take place?
So, none of these are transfers. So, this is, and just to be hypothetical, this is a conversion of units.
Conversion.
Right, so we're taking units offline and create, and converting them to a residential We constantly track our, the units, we have tracking tables that are public and are made available to the, to the community, so that's where those will be recognized.
So, the conversion would, wouldn't be finalized until a project was brought forward?
Absolutely. You're correct.
Thank you.
Follow-up to that briefly. Would, there'd obviously need to be a map on the property for those units going to be converted from hotel to private ownership.
There'll be a map for those units that want to be sold.
Right, that's essentially what I'm asking.
Correct.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioners? Looks like there's none, let's report any ex parte communications, and we'll start down at the other end there with Commissioner Rosin.
None.
None.
I spoke, well, I emailed staff about a couple questions, that was it.
Just a conversation with staff, some questions about the report.
Same with me, just some questions to staff.
I spoke with staff and some members of the public.
All right, let's move forward with the, and we'll open the public hearing, and we'll start with the appellants. Presentation, and just a point of information, who's going to present on behalf of the appellant? Okay, great. If you could just state your name and...
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Black of Chatten Brown Carstens and Minter, here on behalf of appellant SPA. As discussed in our letter and outlined in the May 14th appeal, SPA has several concerns about the legality of the Director's determination claiming the authority to interpret residential uses as accessory uses to hotel, resort hotels in the city. The Director's interpretation is a change in definition, not interpretation of an ambiguity, and therefore exceeds the Council's or Director's authority under the city charter. It requires a general plan amendment, which has not occurred. It sets up an end run around the Green Light Initiative by authorizing more than 100 previously unplanned and unapproved residential units in Newport Center and possibly in the airport area without a public vote, and it conflicts with the city's local coastal program implementation plan, which prohibits the conversion of hotel uses, hotel rooms meant to serve visitors to the coastal zone. SPA takes no position on whether residential units ultimately belong in these areas. This can, and it should be studied. SPA's overarching concern here, as SPA's overarching concern usually is, is with process, the integrity of the city's zoning code, general plan, and other planning documents. Newport Beach thrives itself on the thriving communities that have resulted from years of organized and comprehensive land use development in this city. State law and the city's charter and code provide that the city's general plan is the constitution for future development. However, the primacies of the general plan and its elements, the planning assumptions, and mitigation contained within them are meaningless if the words within the general plan, zoning code, and local coastal program may be interpreted in ways that conflict with their intended meanings, and that is exactly what is proposed here. The staff report claims that the Charter vests the city's officials and council with the authority to interpret the city's codes. The statement is generally correct, but it has its limits. Interpretation is something that is permitted, and honestly, something that is only necessary where there is ambiguity. However, there is no ambiguity as to whether residential unit uses are permitted in hotels. Titles 20 and 21 provide that hotels are for transient guests. The plain meaning of that is very clear. Residential uses, on the other hand, are for permanent guests, permanent residents, rather. It is not interpreting an ambiguity to read a land use to include the opposite of that, it's redefining it. The city's authority to interpret its code is not absolute, and it certainly does not extend to wholesale changing the meaning through interpretation. The meaning must be reasonable. Interpreting transient to mean permanent isn't reasonable. Now, if the city wishes to redefine hotels to permit residential uses, it can do so through established city planning processes. In fact, as has already been discussed, the city is currently updating its housing element to meet the six-cycle regional housing needs allocation. A land use element update will follow. Making all of these changes at once through the normal planning and review process ensures that the city's codes and planning documents remain consistent, it's also much more efficient. And more importantly, for the purpose of effectuating City Council Policy K4 and its intended purposes, it would ensure that the city's actions to increase housing supply actually supply affordable housing. As proposed, it appears unlikely that additional residential uses in resort hotels would provide affordable housing at all. Second, the Director's determination appears to be an end run around the Green Light Initiative. The staff report hangs its hat on the idea that the Green Light Initiative only applies to general plan amendments. Thus, it claims the allowance of more than 100 new residential units in these areas doesn't trigger Green Light. The staff report neglects to mention that the city has in the past, and even as recently as February of this year, told the public that adding residential uses to hotels would require a general plan amendment, and not just a general plan amendment, but a local coastal program amendment. In 2006, the city rejected attempts to convert hotel space without a general plan amendment. In 2011, the department determined that conversion of hotel uses required a general plan amendment, and what has changed between then and now? And considering that planning processes are already underway to address the city's housing needs, why undermine the city's existing and future planning documents to do it like this? Again, as the staff presentation just talked about, staff is changing the code to address ADUs, why not change the code to address this if that's what the city wishes to do? Section 423 of the city's charter, which all officials must uphold and implement, requires a vote of the people when 100 residential units will be added to a statistical area beyond what has already been approved. That is exactly how significantly increases is defined in Section 423 of the charter, as was put up on the PowerPoint presentation by staff. The Director's determination will permit somewhere around 250 units in the airport area and in Newport Center. We know that Newport Center does not have 250 units left without requiring a vote of the people. This action violates the city charter. Improperly avoiding the general plan amendment to add this doesn't change that. The staff report, and staff have claimed that the city has done this before, and SPA has objected to this before, and just because SPA hasn't, you know, been able to litigate every instance where it thinks the city is deviating from its plans, doesn't mean that it's legal to do so. Additionally, the Coastal Act is highly protective of visitor-serving uses, such as hotel rooms in the coastal zone, and this is enshrined in the city's local coastal program implementation plan, which prohibits the conversion of those hotel rooms. Thus, the city's action here violates the LCP and the Coastal Act, and cannot be undertaken without prior application and approval of the Coastal Commission, which has not occurred here for the interpretation. One of the relevant hotels is outside the appeal zone, but it does remain in the coastal zone, and therefore, these provisions still apply. Moreover, as detailed in our letter, the city cannot make the findings required under Title 20 and Title 21 to make this interpretation. Finally, SPA is concerned about precedent here. If the city permits an interpretation to override the plain meaning of the zoning code and the LCP, it's frankly in a terrible position when something like this comes up again. How do you oppose a request in the future when you've granted them in the past? SPA urges the city not to undermine its charter, its code, its planning documents, to please reject the Director's determination, and pursue any needed changes to the code through the existing amendment processes that are already underway to address the city's housing needs. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Is there any questions? Ms. Black, I don't, there may be some questions from the commissioners here for you. If there's anyone that would like to question, some questions for the appellant? Seen that? Guess not? Okay. All right. At this point, let's, let's move forward with general public comments and we'll start and try to keep a three-minute time limit. And if you could state your name.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm Gary Sherwin. I am the president, CEO of Newport Beach and Company and visit Newport Beach. And we are here tonight to support the director's determination based on council policy K4 and request that the planning commission uphold that policy. You know, there are many reasons why we feel this policy is effective, but the hospitality industry has another very compelling reason, and that is the nature of hotel financing and operations have been rapidly accelerating over the last several years. And it has only gone even more extreme after COVID's record destruction of the tourism industry that really will be felt for many years. If you look at some of the most dynamic hotel products, projects being developed in the country today, they include some form of residential product as part of their development. If you look at LA Live with the JW Marriott and the Ritz Carlton, they're great examples of these. These mixed-use hotels now are an established trend within the hospitality industry and incorporate hotel branded residential units as an accessory use located within a resort complex where residents can enjoy a wide array of services and amenities. Without these residential units, most hotel projects today would have difficulty being financed, and that includes capital for renovations to existing hotel properties. And we're already seeing significant renovations of projects here in town. This is the way new hotels will be built in the future and how they can remain fresh and modern in the years ahead. This trend has taken hold and there is no turning back. The city of Newport Beach has an opportunity to be a market leader so that its hotels can meet, that meet a certain criteria, welcome all its guests, those who visit for the day, those who spend a few nights, and those who want to live at the hotel, even part-time, which many of these people will be, and experience all the resort amenities that they have to offer. The director's determination based on council policy K4 recognizes these essential trends in the hotel industry, and we ask you to uphold this excellent policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwin. Mr. Mosher?
Chair Lowry, members of the planning commission. My name is Jim Mosher. I, I know all these people sitting here and I have respected them. I don't think any of them are bad people, but this is bad process that you are seeing here tonight that needs to be rejected. And I'm rethinking my respect because the director showed you a slide of Charter section 423. He said it doesn't, he underlined the words density and intensity, and he told you that section does not apply because we're not changing density here. I'm not quite sure how he can say that if he's actually read the code that he is interpreting. I believe the word density is defined probably in the general plan. I'm pretty sure it's defined in the zoning code and our local coastal program. Density is number of dwelling units per acre. Because I've had some dispute with our staff about this, whether it's per lot or per acre, but density refers to residences and the number of them. This interpretation is adding residences where they never were before. It is changing density. How, how they could not know that is beyond me. And we've been told there's nothing in that that prohibits conversions, but there's nothing in our general plan that allows conversions either, so why should it be there? And we've heard in the past that they converted tennis courts into residences. Actually, they turned them into hotel room entitlements. And our deputy director sitting here wrote a memo saying that they could not do that before they did it. So there's a lot of problem here. They've also not told you that on the night that the policy K4 was adopted by Council Resolution 2021-18, they also asked the council to adopt Resolution 2021-19, initiating amendments to the general plan, the coastal plan, the zoning code, and the implementation plan to allow for many kinds of creative land use, including these conversions. Yet after that, apparently they found, after looking for what they call ambiguities, that they don't actually need those amendments to all those things for this. And then we look at the interpretation. I can easily envision that if this went through the proper process of debate and consideration, that there might be a code that says a hotel is allowed 30% of residential units in it. But how could you come up with that number by mere interpretation? How can you look at the current definition of a hotel room and say, well, it's not 29 or 28, it's 30, not 31? That's not interpretation, that's legislation. And I don't think the staff is supposed to be legislating. And then the findings. To confirm this determination, you have to make the findings that the director made, which you cannot make for the Marriott Hotel in the CV designation area. You have to find that this is a use equivalent to the current uses.
Mr. Mosher, I almost, sorry. Thank you. Try to stick forward to the three minutes here.
Yes, you have a long line of people here and a long agenda, so I understand the need to do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I think it's clear from what the community development director said in his presentation tonight, that his interpretation is, is a part of the city's effort to satisfy RENA, the general plan update. And it should be a part of that. What he's doing is an attempt to circumvent this process. It should be linked to the general plan. I don't think he could make it any clearer in what he said. I believe there is also insufficient information presented to you. While the traffic engineer nodded his head, there's a whole bunch of other environmental concerns other than traffic that have not been presented to you or the public. And I believe that the director's determination to convert these hotel rooms and allow new hotel rooms to be built somewhere else, I don't believe that's been evaluated ever in the history. And that the SEQA documents that were prepared for these existing hotel projects, for the general plan amendment at the time, for zone changes, for the LCP, none of these documents could have known, could have evaluated the policy K4, the recent housing laws, the density bonuses that are certainly going to be asked for by the hotel builders that are going to add to this 240 or whatever the units are, and the accessory dwelling units that are going to add to this. And the development incentives that are going to be asked, like a reduction in parking. They're not talking about this. This could not have been evaluated in any environmental document today. So for this planning commission to make the finding that there is no possibility that the decision that you're being asked tonight is not going to have an effect on the environment, I don't believe you have sufficient information before you. Also, I believe the applicability of the determination to the non-appellable areas of the LCP is a clear attempt by the planning director to circumvent the local coastal program, local coastal commission, and its decision-making authority. It is clear. Why doesn't it apply to the whole coastal area? Why is it limited to the non-appellable area? So what I recommend this planning commission do, and it's certainly within your authority, is to instruct staff to ask for a coastal commission director's interpretation. Certainly, if somebody was going around, somebody would want to have a discussion. We'll get it in writing and have the coastal commission director tell you that what you're doing is okay. It's not a violation of the local coastal program, that it will not impact coastal resources, before you make a decision. And finally, I'm not sure it's within your authority to approve this appeal because I believe it is a general plan amendment and an LCP amendment, and I believe you should make a recommendation to the city council of what you believe the city council should do.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience that would like to, to speak in public comments? Looks like there's none. Ms. Black, would you like to come up in, in any closing arguments or anything from the appellant? For the appellant? All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and close then the public hearing. And if there's any more questions from the commissioners to staff or conversations or emotion amongst the commissioners? Vice Chair.
I have a couple of questions. Are these properties that would be affected by this determination in the areas that would be allowed to potentially apply for a permit for short-term lodging, as it stands today? They're not?
No.
I didn't think so. So when we're talking about use, because I know there's been some, some debate about verbiage and definitions, but there's, there's nothing here that references, I don't know what the actual black letter law or our definition in the city of, of residential unit is, but there's nothing obviously that dictates that these would be permanent residents, right? Like we have property all over the city that don't necessarily house permanent residents. People could live there one week a year or, you know, never use the property or, or be there full-time or rent them or, you know, a number of other scenarios, right?
No, that's correct. Vice Chair Kleiman, we don't, we don't have any language that says that you have to be permanent. This interpretation is really focusing on, you know, both the for sale and for rent. There's nothing in the municipal code or general plan that I'm aware of that says you have to be a permanent resident.
Thank you. And then can you kind of just walk everybody back through this process and further clarify? It seems to be getting lost in translation, the fact that this is not a by right use, that this is not an entitlement for any of these projects. I know you, you talked about it in your presentation, but I think it's worth repeating, you know, the actual steps that any one of these four properties would have to go through to get to a point where they're actually quote unquote adding or converting, in this case, a unit to, to something other than the existing hotel room.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kleiman. So that, that's correct. This, this determination is not an entitlement. It doesn't grant anybody a specific type of project. The only thing this, this determination does, it says, you know, when you look at the list of accessory uses to hotels, it lists a different, a number of different uses, and it uses the word may. You know, it could maybe restaurant or it could be may meeting rooms. It, it never contemplated residential uses. And as I talked about why we're doing this, and I've, I've talked about COVID, I've talked about RENA, you know, I'm, I'm looking at that list and says, you know, we need to include that residential component. It doesn't contemplate that. And so the only thing that this determination does, it says you may be able to use a, convert a residential unit, I'm sorry, convert a hotel unit to a residential. We're not increasing as the charter is looking at, we're not adding, we're converting. And so anybody who wants to take advantage of that determination is going to submit an, an application to the city to start and begin the planning process. And we have SEQA we have to comply with. We have to look at coastal access, coastal resources. Is there, the financial analysis needs to be done with regards to, is there a loss of TOT or there's not a loss of TOT? There's a development agreement to look at, are they going to add affordable units or they're going to pay an in-lu fee? So again, RENA isn't just affordable units, it's a wide spectrum of affordability of units. So that's what the city's planning for. This, the only thing this does is just adds residential to that list of potential accessory uses to these resort hotel styles, where you have a mixture of different services that can be provided. They still have to go through the planning and the entitlement process. It'll be public hearings in front of the planning commission. And with development agreements, it'll go to the city council for their consideration. There'll be a lot of public input for any project that comes forward and wants to take advantage of this determination.
And as part of that review, as always, we would assume parking, as you mentioned, the environmental impacts, the, the traffic impacts, things like that would absolutely be under review by you staff and by, and by us, the planning commission.
It's treated as any other project, and we will look at all the environmental impacts, the parking impacts, the traffic impacts, all that has to be vetted. We'll see if any project actually meets the requirements and the environmental comes back that everything's okay. I mean, that, that's the review process and that's where the planning commission is going to step in and be able to review that. We'll make our recommendations and findings, but you'll have the final say on those projects.
Well, I have one last question. Can you kind of refresh us on the summary of our RENA requirement? Overall, how many of those are, are designated to be affordable and also how many we are expecting to kind of fall in the areas where these projects or these properties that are affected by this determination would be?
I'm going to let Deputy Director Jim Kim answer that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kleiman. Unfortunately, I don't have a copy of the draft housing element with me today. We did prepare a complete redraft of this and it was made available on the city's website this week. But by memory, the 4,834 units, roughly two-thirds, roughly 70% of that is low, very low, and moderate income. Roughly 25% is above moderate income. And within the, the discussions of the housing element, where we're putting all of those units, we're, we're kind of focusing in on a variety of strategies. One is with accessory dwelling units. We're looking at 1,000 units throughout the entire community, so they're in every area. We're looking at focusing some units in Banning Ranch, the Coyote Canyon landfill, Newport Center, and the airport area. In addition to that, there's some areas up behind Hoag, West Newport Mesa, and on the Dover-West Cliff area. Unfortunately, I just don't have the numbers. I think Simone is trying to pull up those numbers here. Oh, here we go. So I can go through the numbers for the 4,800 units here. We've got 1,456 units for very low income, 930 for low, 1,050 for moderate income, and 1,409 units for above moderate income. So we need to plan for each one of those categories. The, the part that I'd have to go through and take a stronger look at is if you're looking at how many units we're putting in each area here, I can, I can refresh.
I mean, general rough numbers, I think, is, is helpful, again, as, as just a reminder and keeping it sort of top of mind as part of this discussion since this is the council policy that was developed to begin to address those needs. So if each of these projects, and again, a lot more bites at the apple, a lot of steps between now and then, but if all of these, let's say, which probably not likely, again, you know, with all the steps that would have to take place, but if all of these projects were to, to convert this maximum number we're looking at, how, what dent would that make in the overall RENA number requirement if we're just looking at just a, maybe not an affordable unit, but just?
Sure. So, so on page eight of the staff report here, we've kind of listed the four properties through, I'm sorry, two, three, four properties that would potentially be eligible under this item and the maximum number based on their existing hotel room count. And so you can see those numbers there totaling 492 units. And so when those projects come forward, as Mr. George has indicated, we'd evaluate, you know, through the development agreement process, they might propose to do affordable housing under, they might not. And through that development agreement process, we would negotiate, well, okay, what can they contribute to our in-lu fund? And they can then provide some funds that we can utilize to leverage and create affordable housing elsewhere in the community. utilize to leverage and create affordable housing elsewhere in the community. So if all of these, you know, were above moderate income, you know, they would clearly satisfy a good line share of our above moderate income, which is 1,409 units. This would provide an opportunity to do that. The above moderate income units are not really the most pressing need that we have, but I think through these, this process and evaluating potential inclusion of affordable housing or a potential in-lug fee, we can leverage those funds and create affordable housing in other areas of the community. So that's a benefit to help us meet our affordable housing obligations.
Sure. Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments, or motions? Commissioner Rosin?
Thank you. Just a quick question about the housing element. Does this council policy exist in the housing element?
Presently, it doesn't exist in the draft housing element. One of the things that we're looking to do is possibly adding another policy that reflect -- there's two other priorities, in case, for that you saw, the evaluation of the mixed-use zones. Are there impediments to how those zones are created that's not creating the housing that would otherwise be allowed there, as well as this policy? So I think we'll be looking to potentially add that to the housing element. This would be an evaluation going forward, once the housing element is approved. The housing element that you see today at the city's website, we're taking that to the City Council on next Tuesday, the 13th. It is a draft document. We hope that the council will agree that it's appropriate, and we're going to submit it to State Department of Housing and Community Development for a 60-day review. And again, it's a draft document. It'll be adopted in January of 2022. So we have the opportunity to make those changes.
Okay, so it could be added to the housing element, which I think satisfies a part of this issue, but the other part of it would be, I guess, from a timing perspective, I know that the comprehensive general plan amendments happen on a certain cycle. If this was a part of that housing element and in part of that potential future comprehensive general plan amendment, wouldn't it also, by default, create this Director's Determination on top of the determination, or maybe I worded that strangely?
You know, it's, again, it's, you know, do you wait -- can you include this in through a general plan amendment process? We're going to add it to, as Jim Campbell said, add it to as policies to review through that process. The comprehensive general plan process is a three-year process for us. It's a long process that we're going to go through. This determination, as I've walked everybody through, you know, I have that authority to say, you know, you have accessory uses, we're going to add residential to that accessory use. You know, it's as simple as that. And if, and it's only applicable to only the four resorts that we've called out. It's really not applicable to all the other 20 hotels and motels that we have. So if the commission or the council, the community wants to support more residential uses throughout the coastal zone, I think that's going to have to be discussed and talked about as we go forward through this general plan process. But again, you know, what we've, what I've done so far, it only affects the kind of the four hotels, and, you know, I've spoken probably over the four, I've spoken to three of them that have interest in doing something, as Mr. Gary Sherwin talked about. There's a need for supporting the hotel industry, and that's where we are today.
Yeah, I don't think there's any doubt that there's a need, and I think this is creative thinking and part of the council and part of staff. But we heard tonight that our decision tonight, you know, is a violation, and then I'm hearing that we have to create a project. So, you know, I'm still thinking that there is no project, so I'm not seeing violation. So I feel like I'd like to make a motion to, if that's okay, to uphold this Director's Determination.
Yep. I'll second the motion to deny the appeal and uphold the Director's determination. I, you know, I think council policy K4 limits our authority to just basically making a determination. If the Director's making the right policy and it's in line with K4, and I can find those findings, and so that's the basis for my second.
Any comments to the motion? All right.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone, for presenting. Let's move on to -- item number four was just removed, so we'll go on to staff, number nine, staff and commissioner items. We'll go to item number five, motion for reconsideration. See none? Here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner?
On item four, staff, don't we have to present the question and then vote on the removal, or is it just left alone? Because it's posted.
Commissioner Kleiman, it is just there for informational purposes. We will renotice it at a future date when it is brought forward.
Okay. Thanks.
Typically, if we wanted to continue the item, then we would make a motion. However, in this case, we'll just renotice.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. So, see no motions for reconsideration. We'll move on to item number six, a report by the Community Development Director or requests for matters which a Planning Commissioner member would like to be placed on a future agenda.
Certainly, Chair Lowry, my report's going to be fairly brief, but on July 13th, as I indicated in my presentation earlier, my remarks in the prior hearing, we are going to be having a study session with the City Council on the updated housing element. You know, we've gone through a process with the City Council to evaluate the draft that you saw, and they gave us some direction, and so we've been reacting to that direction. We also had a public community meeting on getting some feedback from the community. And so all of that feedback is informed, kind of an update to the documents. We have a complete redraft. It's in a redline strikeout version. It is available at the city's website, and we'll have a study session next Thursday -- I'm sorry, next Tuesday, the 13th. I believe it starts at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So coming forward for the Planning Commission on July 22nd, we've got three items on the agenda. One is a simple encroachment agreement, a consent item, but we have two public hearings. These are ordinance updates, actually, so these are city-initiated amendments, one to update the tattoo ordinance, you saw that before, and it's coming back. The other one is making some map corrections to our setback maps. We're cleaning those up, and we're just simply providing clarification and fixing them. So not overly weighty, if you will. That concludes my report, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there any questions from commissioners? See none. We'll move on to the last item, number seven, requests for excused absences. Looks like there's none, so we'll be here through the summer. So seeing that, we will adjourn at 7:28.